January twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. And if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Dear Lord, tonight we are faced with a winter storm watch. Please keep us and our families safe from harm. Please drive carefully and be safe. In your name we pray.
Any other additions? Mr. Grant?
Yes, I'd like to add an agenda item that was left off on old business of the speeding on East Main Street, speed limit on East Main Street.
Okay, let's add that as, let's just make that K under old business, since we talked about that and it was inadvertently left off of the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion and second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Public announcements. Mr. Gru, do you have any particular announcements?
I don't have any particular announcements, but I'd like for Mr. Grant to give a quick update on the town hall that we had last week to talk about our LCI update. Mr. Grant?
Thank you. Yes, so last Thursday night, we had TSW, our planning firm, up on the, for the LCI update and the new master plan for downtown the River Mill District. And we invited the community to come out and give us their thoughts and ideas. Wonderful presentation from TSW. And we had over a hundred and twenty citizens come to this workshop, which was really, really wonderful, very encouraging. People were very positive and very engaged in the process. And we were very happy to see them. We want to thank all those citizens who came out. And encourage those who didn't get to attend to go to our website, cantonforward.com, where you can share your thoughts and ideas there. And we'll be scheduling, there'll be another workshop, actually a presentation of the draft plan in the next couple of months. And we'll announce that and the community again will be invited to attend and give us their input. So we're off to a great start and we're excited about the process.
Thank you. Anyone, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes, I just wanted to announce that we are having a very good bluegrass music group come into the theater again this weekend. They've been here before. It's usually a sellout, so you might want to check it. But if you like bluegrass music, they're very good.
Good.
Skillet Liquors, that's right.
The what?
The Skillet Liquors.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're pretty well known.
Good. Okay, thanks. Anyone else? If not, we don't have anyone signed up for the public input period, so we'll move along our consent agenda. The items to be considered, I will read those. And if there's any that needs to be pulled off the consent agenda for further discussion, just let me know. Item A, approval of resolution to adopt a capital improvement element and five-year short-term work plan for the impact fee program. Item B, approval of annexation of Lane Wood property located at five eleven Oakdale Road, case AX fifteen ten dash zero zero one. And C, approval of rezoning of property of Lane Wood, five eleven Oakdale Road, case Z fifteen ten dash zero zero one. Are there any questions? Or is there a motion to approve those as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Item, under old business, item A, update from our fireworks permit committee, council members Goodwin, Yawn, and Grant. Who's, Mr. Yawn?
Councilman Goodwin, Grant, and I, along with the mayor and Mr. Peppers, met on the twelfth. And after some discussion, decided to take a look at what cities in surrounding states that have had fireworks for quite a while are doing, rather than trying to reinvent the wheel. And also, Mr. Peppers informed us that the legislature is considering some changes to the law that would impact what we might be able to do. So we have decided to gather that information and then see what the law does and then bring our recommendations at that time. And we are welcome, any input anyone might have to give us on this issue.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am? That's a good point. Good point. And I definitely think we'd want to consider that. All right, good. Anyone else have any comments? Okay. Thank you. Discussion in action on abandonment of Circle Court. Bobby, our city attorney, where do we stand on that?
I think, given the way things are proceeding with the contract, and because it makes more sense to abandon it to somebody besides ourselves, that we ought to just table that until the more appropriate time.
Okay. So should we postpone it to a date certain or just?
I would postpone it indefinitely and we can just put it back on the agenda at the time.
Okay, do we have a motion to do that? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Okay, so it's postponed. Discussion in action on Wanna Play Baseball Inc. concession contract. Tom?
Yes, sir. You guys have any questions from last meeting that we had? Yes, sir.
Tom, one question. We had talked about the possibility of maybe doing it ourselves. Did we explore that further?
Yes, sir. I've got an estimated cost of what the equipment would be that wouldn't be needed in the concession stand, that the city would need to purchase. And then also we'd have to, if we ran ourselves, we'd have to staff it as far as hiring part-time workers to work in there, probably hire a part-time concession coordinator to coordinate, you know, keeping the stock in the concession stand with the food and the drink and everything else, and then keeping the concession stand up to code.
When the food goes bad, it's our fault, right? I mean, you know, it's all on us, right?
What's that, I'm sorry?
It's all on us if the food goes, you've got to take care of that.
Absolutely. We have to take care of the food and all the cleanliness of the concession stand would have to be.
Based on your opinion, which one makes the most sense?
Personally, in my experience, is contracting it out makes the most sense. This is a group that's used to doing it in other municipalities around the metro area.
Milton, you said it was Milton where they do it.
Milton was the most recent they've had.
They came from Pennsylvania, right?
Yeah, that's where they're from. They've been down here about fifteen years or so. But they've done stuff up there. They've done stuff around the different municipalities and parks around the area as well.
Billy, putting you on the spot, but do you agree?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a question necessarily as it relates to contracting the service out. You know, probably my biggest concern is jumping in on somebody with a three-year contract, you know. If we could negotiate a shorter term contract, just to see how everything works out, that might be an option. As it relates to equipment, the only thing I would really want to see as part of our agreement with them is that we get the ultimate sign-off on the equipment that they install, so that we can make sure, you know, that if they're putting something in, that it's appropriately gauged for the electrical that we have in there, that what they're doing meets all of our codes, and have that ability to say yes or no on certain equipment. We don't, we would not want them bringing in old equipment into our new facility and us paying the electrical cost on some older aging equipment. So, you know, my only suggestion would be that we might want to go back with either a shorter term contract or some specification as to the sign-off on equipment.
Billy, it's a three-year contract, but if they don't perform, I'm sure we have a way to get out of that, correct? I mean, there's going to be something in there that's as if they're not doing their job.
Yeah, there's a.
But we're protected.
Yes, number thirteen sets that up. So any violation or anything, and then we can reword that as well, because we'll have to amend the contract to a shorter contract, which they are in agreement to. If they can do a one year with like a, maybe a renewable for a second year.
Is it their contract or our contract?
Excuse me?
Is it their contract or our?
It's our contract.
And Bobby's reviewed it? Bobby has reviewed?
This one here, yes, he has, yes.
Okay, okay.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I was wondering if this company, Wanna Play Ball, installs equipment and we terminate contract, or they terminate contract and they uninstall equipment, will they be liable for any repairs that their equipment may have caused holes in the countertop?
Yeah, any kind of damage to the concession stand itself, yes, they would be liable for the repairs of that. And that's stated in the contract.
Mr. Allen?
I guess, two questions I had. We were talking about the ability to terminate the contract. It says violate terms in the contract, but I guess it would be nice to have something just for, like they do per quality service, they do poor quality food, which is not detailed in the contract. So another way to get out in case we're just unhappy with their service. And the second question is, going back to what Ms. McGrew was talking about, it's not so much damage to the facility as modifications, would they be responsible for restoring it to the way it was before they came in, is our question. Because if you cut a hole in the counter to install something, should you have to restore the counter to this previous condition?
Absolutely.
And I guess I'd like to see that spelled out.
Okay.
Mr. Grant?
Did I understand you correctly that they are open to doing a one-year contract instead of a three-year?
Yes, I did talk to them about that based upon the conversation and discussion from the last meeting. And they said they are willing to do one year and possibly maybe put like a renewable for a second year in there. But they are willing to do the one year.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to outsource that to someone who does that, you know, as their business. So I'd like to move that we approve the contract with Wanna Play Baseball for a one-year period.
Did you say one year or three?
One year.
We don't, but we don't know the terms for the one year, right?
Well, what we will do is, since they're in agreement to do one year, since we know that the council sounds like they're willing to contract the service out, we'll make a couple of modifications to this contract, including the items that y'all brought up. Get that to Bobby, make sure he signs off on it, and then we'll turn around and we can bring it back. It's already been brought to you, so, you know.
We could do that first meeting.
Approve it at the February meeting, we could approve that contract at that date.
Question that I would have is, who decides when they're open and closed?
It's stated in the contract here, but it's for practices, games, tournaments, and then any kind of special events other than a fundraising special event that people may be selling concessions for a fundraiser. So at that point, they won't be able to be open. But then the times we give them on weeknights and weekends will be based upon the times that we get. But then the times we give them on weeknights and weekends will be based upon the times that we give them, and then we'll give them a schedule of all the activities that are out there.
Okay, and they would be expected to be there at all those activities?
Yes, sir.
And one other thing, what is the cost to us if them doing that? Are they just doing that?
Well, they purchased their own stock to stock the concession stand.
And they make their own money, and we get ten percent, or is that what it was?
It's five percent that comes back to the city, yes, sir.
How did... Did you analyze the cost of our doing it ourselves?
Not so much as, I mean, from a staffing standpoint, you've got to look at the salary or the money that you have to pay part-time workers. We'd have to go out and take up time to stock it ourselves. So, you know, I think from a five percent standpoint, and contracting it out to a company and people that this is what they do, I think that's the route that we need to go, at least right now, getting started.
I tend to agree, particularly if they do the one-year contract, I agree with that, certainly. Mr. Oss?
You know, Bill Grant suggested a one-year contract. They want a three-year contract. Maybe we can give them one year with two options to renew, mutually agreed on, just to get them up to that three-year number. So, we're really committed to them, but we're really a one-year at a time, but we want to look at three years, too.
Well, the great thing about this, too, is because we're going to get five percent of the sales, we're going to know what the net sales are. That should be the factor that lets us know if it's something that we want to do in-house or not, whether we could cover our costs.
Mr. Goodwin?
Knowing after one year.
My question was, I know they're doing Milton, but have we vetted this company pretty well?
Excuse me, everybody?
Have we vetted this company pretty well?
Yes, sir, yep. They turned in a very thorough proposal to us.
Okay, and who's going to, in our area, who's going to keep up with the sales and what we actually should be receiving?
They'll keep up with the sales, and they'll turn in a monthly report, and off that monthly report, we'll invoice them the five percent based upon the monthly reports that they turn in.
Okay, thank you.
Bobby?
What we can do on the contract is make it one, we do this often, make it one year, have it automatically renewable unless either party terminates by a date certain, so that we would have a chance to say, well, we don't want to do it anymore, and then you don't have to have a reason at that point, but if nobody does anything, it rolls over into... And we can do that for two years, to make it a three-year contract unless somebody terminates it in advance.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Does that require a modification of your motion, Bill?
I think it just requires me, I will withdraw my motion until we have a new contract review.
So, can I make a motion then to do what Bobby said, that one-year contract? Okay.
Okay, yeah, that'll be fine, thank you. Okay, next item. Discussion and action on amended ordinance regarding alcohol server permits.
Yes, I'll end that one.
We'll go back and forth.
Yeah, you can explain why we're doing what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
The... After the work session, we've made the change that was discussed about only requiring training the first time and not annually. But since then, it came, I guess Mr. Grant had a question about, right? Our ordinance currently requires the permit to be worn visibly, and there was some concern expressed about the safety perhaps of the servers with their full name being on there, and checked with the police department, and they had no problem with just requiring it to be on the person. So, the version you have in front of you now only requires that the permit be on person, not, doesn't have to be visible. Just have to be produced upon request. And the other change was, right now, the permit is, we issue a separate permit for each restaurant. And Mr. Pepper can explain why we would go to a citywide permit.
What we decided to do in bringing this to you is, the goal of the actual permit is for, if there's an issue, or if a member of the public, or if one of the restaurants has an issue, they can report the server to the city. Well, what we felt like is part of the ordinance, instead of having the server have one ID that says they worked at this restaurant, or one ID that says they work part-time at this restaurant, we would just issue the permit to the server. They get their license, and they can have it on their person wherever they work. We don't really care which of the restaurants they're working at. We just want to know that the pourers at each of those establishments has gone through the training and has been vetted and are certified by the city. So, what you have before you takes this process and makes a citywide pouring ID for that server, and they can use it in any establishment in the city. It's good for the year. If they change jobs, they don't have to come back in. We don't have to change out paperwork. It gets rid of some of the administrative headache that our police department has in these changeover of servers from business to business.
Do they have to have a job before they can get a permit?
No.
So, anyone could go to this training session, you could get your permit, and then you could go anywhere?
And frankly, I would think that would make that person more valuable for a business.
That's what I'm saying, absolutely.
Now, they know when they hire them, they don't have to send them to training. It's already taken care of for the rest of the year.
Okay, anyone else have any comments about that? I wanted to ask a question, it's sort of flip-flops, but I promised Thomas I would bring it up, okay? And that is regarding the notice that's required for notifying people, we don't want you to be DUI. We don't want you to be drinking when you're drunk when you drive away from an establishment. And that is whether or not the police could maintain anonymity of a person when they pick them up to take them home. If someone called the number, and they came and picked them up to take them home within the city of Canton, could the police remain, could they maintain that name, you know? Bobby, is that, I understand that, he told me that the chief had sent something to him saying that they couldn't do it, or wouldn't do it, or whatever.
I think it's probably wouldn't do it, but...
Okay.
That's a fair point, but it's putting the police officers in a...
It is putting the police officers kind of in a bad spot, if they're not allowed to find out who they are, and how do they know where to take them, and all that.
I think the compromise there is that, you know, the police department is not going to be keeping a log of everybody who utilizes the service and publishing a log. But when that individual calls, they will give us a name. We'll know who to ask for when we get to the location to pick up, because we need to know who we're picking up, and we'll need to know where they live. And we need to verify that there's technically a city resident, because it's a service to city residents. The officer's then going to report to dispatch, I'm on my way to this residence to drop so-and-so off. Technically, someone could file an open records request and have all of that information dumped to find out what's going on. The goal is not to pick somebody up and do a ton of research on them before we take them home. We just need to know who they are, where they're going, and also to make sure when someone says they need to go home, that it's their home, and that they have not had anything, any orders by the court not to be there. We don't want to take someone home when they've been told they can't be there.
I think there probably will be a record kept of it, though, because the police department's going to want to keep a record of where they've been and who they've taken, and all that.
But it would be no different than the records we keep on service calls now.
Correct.
No different than any of the records we keep in the fire department as it relates to well-being checks that people might ask us to do or something like that. It's just part of business. It's not a published log that we would submit, you know, on an annual basis.
That's a little bit different, you know, you pick up the phone, hey, I'm drunk, come get me, you know? You may think, how many times does that happen? How many times that particular person doing that? Well, you know, quite honestly, from my perspective, I think it would speak well of them, that they didn't want to get on the highway.
Sure.
But I understand, I said I would bring that up, I did, okay. The only other thing that I said I would bring up that was asked was, and this relates back to the previous server discussion, what is the timeframe when a person qualifies, gets their training? Do they immediately get that license, or is there anything else? Is there a timeframe involved?
They actually don't have to have the training immediately. They have to do the training within...
A hundred days, is that it?
I think it's sixty days, maybe? Hundred days, yeah. They have to train with them, so they can start working if they don't come in and get their, they can do that without a permit.
Right, but the training is an essential part of that permit, of that application, right? In order for that application, for a permit to be fulfilled, you have to complete the training.
Correct.
Okay, so, once that training is complete, is there a required timeframe that the city must give them that license?
Yeah, what the ordinance has, and I just came up with this, is two, it's basically, if they come back, and it's been two years since they were first issued, they have to do the training again. So, you can continue to renew, but in the third...
If you take time off?
If you take time off, there's a gap. If you don't renew one year, you're going to have to get retrained.
Yeah, my question is, once you get retrained, how long is it before you get your license?
Are you talking about actual giving it to them?
Yeah, immediately.
I think they, don't they give it to them?
It's pretty immediate, yes.
By pretty, you mean immediate or two, three days?
I think they get it when they apply. They do the training a hundred days later, or within the next...
Unless there's a glitch with the card printer or something like that, it's picked up on site.
So, there's no requirement for the city to issue a license within five days of the time that there's a completion of a training?
No, we try our best to do it immediately. If somebody comes in late, you know, if somebody comes at the last minute...
I think they actually get it when they apply, and then we take it away if they don't do the training.
Oh, okay.
But it is a true ID, it has all their information on it, that we're required to be able to check if we have to go on-site and inspect.
Okay, that answered that, pretty much. Mr. Grant?
Yes, I just wanted clarification. This ordinance only has to do with server permits and not the posting of the DUI.
Correct, this is just about the server's...
And then, other thing I just wanted to say, that in talking to several restaurant owners, the fact that their servers don't have to do the annual training every year, and also, now that we're not requiring them to wear the license, the restaurant owners are very appreciative of that. And I think it's in keeping with other cities, and I think it just makes us a more business-friendly city to those restaurants, and we certainly want more of those, so I'd like to move to approve the amended server permits ordinance.
You got something? Okay, so we got a second, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Item E, discussion and action resolution to accept Northside Parkway Phase Two for city maintenance. Mr. Peppers?
Road's been inspected, good to go.
Okay.
We told you at the last meeting, we'd go out and make sure everything was done. The inspection was completed. We are already maintaining the stormwater and all.
Now, this is not, there's not sidewalks everywhere there, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, in essence, it's not really complete, but there's a bond there to complete it if they don't.
Correct.
We don't want that bond to expire.
That's right. The street part that we would be taking over has already been inspected.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just wanted to make the motion to accept the Northside Parkway.
Okay, makes motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Item F has been moved, and item G, discussion and action of proposed change order with Engineering Strategies, Inc. for construction management and resident inspection services at wastewater treatment plant in the amount of a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I don't know if you have any more questions from last time, but we do have a representative from ESI here if you have any further questions.
Okay, anyone have any questions at this point? I guess my question was probably more clarification, trying to figure exactly what we were talking about. And that is, it appeared, Pedro, then you probably have to help me with this, but it appeared that, of course, ESI did the redesign, and the way it was conveyed last meeting, at least to me, that I understood, was that as a result of the redesign taking longer, that the, there was a need for additional work as far as construction management goes. Now, is that, I'm trying to figure that scenario out.
I think what happened, Mayor, back when the project was being redesigned, contractor did not know how much longer construction was going to take. You know, it was back in, somewhere starting in October last year, or 2014, through like February of 2015, and we kept asking the contractor to furnish a new project schedule based on the new design. We couldn't get one. They just didn't know how much longer it was going to take. And, you know, the project started really slow also, you know, because they're on-site while we're doing a redesign of the project. So, they're going fairly slow until they get the full redesign done, and then the change order approved and all that, which didn't happen until February of 2015. And so, it probably wasn't several months after that when we started seeing the contractors saying, you know, it's going to take longer than we anticipated. I think they were being optimistic, to be honest with you. We had no idea how much longer it was going to take. So, when we finished the redesign, you know, at that time, we were just kind of concentrating on the redesign of the project. Let's get a project that can move forward as fast as it can. And then, so later on, of course, they came up with the extension in time. And so, we just didn't know how much longer it was going to take. They didn't have really anything to go back.
So, are you saying that originally it was going to take X amount of time to construct the plant, to do the work? And that the original fee estimate was based on that amount of time?
Exactly, right.
And now, they've come back and said, well, it's going to take longer to do that?
Correct, correct. And so, we have a person there who's on-site, he's part-time, he's not full-time, but he's probably seventy percent of the time there. And we take, you know, there's some work that we have to do from the office also, checking pay requests, answering questions that come up during construction and things like that, attending the progress meetings. So, that's what goes into the fee, is that person that we have there, that's almost there, almost full-time, seventy, seventy-five percent of the time. And so, we basically used up all the time that was in the original construction management contract.
Okay.
And so, did our best estimate what it's going to take to finish, which should be enough. We don't expect to have to add any more time unless, you know, something happens with the weather, contractor doesn't get through with the construction at that time.
Okay, Mr. Grant, you have a question?
Yes, and just again, to clarify, need more money for construction management because of the redesign took longer than anticipated. Do we have a deadline for the redesign when ESI?
Well, there, I mean, there's a deadline now for the contractor, I believe it's in June... June twenty-ninth?
Was there a deadline, though, for the redesign when the council voted to?
It was ASAP. Yeah, I mean, we had to do it real quickly. It was like two or three months early.
In my mind, ASAP is not a hard date, and I still have, you know, kind of issue with...
Yeah, well, basically, to give you an idea, the original design took two and a half years, or a year and a half, I can't remember which. They did the redesign in about four months. So, from the standpoint of redesigning it and getting it approved through EPD, I think it was a phenomenal timeframe, given how things typically will go.
Anyone else? So, my question, I guess, once again, is, was it the length of the redesign that created the extension of the contractor?
Not, not necessarily the length of the redesign. You, you have to understand that they were issued a notice to proceed on May fourth or something of 2014 for a twenty-one month contract.
And was that before the, it was, that was after the
That was before.
Design was finished, redesign was finished?
Oh, that was on the original design.
Oh, okay.
And then, so, they had a contract beginning in May. Contractor, Heavy, had a contract beginning in May with a twenty-one month period. Then, we get started, and we redesign it, and really don't get started with construction until October, if so. And then, once that was finished, then the contractor gave us a new construction schedule that takes us out to, well, now, June.
Okay, now, they had a proceed to work order initially, and then, when did they actually start work?
They actually started in May. They started mobilizing, they started doing some preliminary site work, setting up all their erosion control measures, and, and we were working with them on the revised design at the same time. So, they kind of had an idea of what we were gonna, planning on doing. So, we tried to do as much work as we could before EPD blessed those drawings and we can go, you know, full steam.
Okay, anyone else have any question, comments? Mr. Grant? Okay, anyone? Okay, all right. Do we, do we have a motion to, uh?
Some more.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no? Was that one? Just one? All members voting for the motion, except for Mr. Grant voting no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item I, discussion and action on a hundred and twenty day moratorium on demolition and alteration permits for property fifty years old or older. This is sort of formalizing what we have talked about at our last meeting, and I believe we have, we have the latest resolution regarding that, which you want to explain the actual district area that is covered?
Yes, and I'll, Bobby and I'll try to tag team this one on the district, but Mr. Patton provided to Bobby a copy of at least what the Historic Preservation Commission is looking at at the district size, and so, that's what this actual moratorium will be based on, is based on the district that they are anticipating being the HPC district, which basically takes us out to Roy Street and goes a parcel deep on East Main Street on its way into downtown, takes over the entire downtown area, and includes Railroad Street.
Yes, basically, it's the railroad, we, it's the, it's the boundary we've used in several ordinances as our historic downtown campus boundary. It's Pettit Street, Railroad Street, the North Street, and then out Main, except this one goes out to Ship Street on East Main, and captures one lot along East Main.
Correct.
To Ship Street.
Goes a little bit further.
This covers both commercial and residential properties?
It does cover both commercial and residential properties.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, on the, on the boundaries of going to Ship Street, which is a little bit further than I think our historic, you know, our Main Street boundaries, only goes to Pettit. I might suggest, given the issues we had several years ago with the East Main Street issue, I believe that the Office Professional went to seventy, seven seventy East Main, which is just a couple houses up from Ship, but to me, it would make sense to go to that same area where the Office Professional ends at seven seventy East Main to include in that.
Would that not be Chrysler Street? Isn't that, isn't that North Chrysler?
It's just beyond it, I mean, it's, seven seventy is not at, I mean, there's an office there now, the, the house is for sale there, but that's where the OP boundary was redrawn and where it ends, and so, I think just to be consistent, so we don't have another boundary between two other boundaries that we established, it would make sense that we at least extend it to that where, where the Office Professional ends. I mean, I think it's just, it's just a couple more houses that are being used as offices, so...
And, and the city council will ultimately decide the historic district for the ordinance purposes. Are you suggesting we go ahead and do it for the moratorium as well?
For the moratorium, yes.
And then, we'll take that information back to Historic Preservation Commission and say they would like to add these, they think these couple needed to be added in. And that'll make it easier for them.
I can't imagine why, when the final district isn't, you know, is put together, that it doesn't go considerably even further than that, to me. I mean, out East Main, there's some historic properties on out there, you know, you got some of the Janette on out to hallway golf course and one or two beyond that, maybe.
Part of the reason why the district doesn't go further than it does now is that the HPC was working under the general direction that they would be focused on commercial properties and not residential, and so, that's why they didn't go out to some of the older, more stately homes on East Main Street with that initial boundary.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure.
If the, if Mr. Patton works with the Historic Preservation Committee, and they come up with the boundaries and get themselves organized before the one hundred and twenty day moratorium, then does it go away?
Yes, once we adopt it. City Council takes action, it goes away.
Okay, so, my suggestion is that Mr. Patton begin working with Historic Preservation really quickly, 'cause haven't, weren't they appointed last May?
They, they have already come up with their preliminary design on the district.
Right.
And they are set to present that before council.
Good, so, we, so, we're looking at a time less than a hundred and twenty days, right?
Absolutely, and we, we, we felt like bringing that district to you tonight and hearing what you need
Right.
on the district, that will make an impact on what they present back to you in the interim.
Well, let's hope that they bring something back to us within, you know, a month or so, because I think we need to move ahead with this and have Historic Preservation be able to look into that.
I think in speaking with Mr. Patton, this was an item that was gonna be on the March work session.
Okay, good. The other thing I wanted to say is that we had a question. I think all of us got a, a question from a staff member who had a house that was not, she was not gonna be able to, to do any repairs, but I wanted to say to Bobby or whoever drew this up, that necessary to bring a structure to habitable state that's good, that's in here, and also, an emergency, any kind of an emergency, then they can, they can do the repairs and, and make it habitable, or if it's an emergency, those repairs can be done. So, I think we're not being restrictive whenever we bring in these kinds of, of ideas, and, and court order, of course, is the other one. So, I'm glad to see that in there, so that we're not being so restrictive.
My guess is that in a four-month period, you get very few permits that would be covered by this.
Right, I don't think we've had any since the moratorium was established, right? I don't think we have, so, but anyway, I'm anxious to see this committee become active.
They've been undergoing quite a bit of training and sessions and, and getting organized and, and doing some work, so hopefully, that will, that'll move forward real quickly. Ms. McGree?
Yes, I was in communication with Mr. Patton yesterday to see from our last council meeting until yesterday afternoon if there had been any requests for permits or any citizen complaints, and he said there had been none.
Right.
So, I, I was concerned how we were affecting the community, and I think it's going to be just fine.
I haven't had any, I did, did see one complaint in the, in the soapbox, but other than that, I haven't had any, you know, direct complaints or anything about it at this point at all.
I'd like to make a motion.
Can I suggest some language for your motion, if I might? Well, just, you don't have the maps in front of you attached, so if you can make the motion to adopt the resolution as drafted, except that the map will be altered to run to North Chrysler Street on East Main.
Won't that do it? Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I think the official Office Professional boundary ends at seven seventy East Main.
You want it to run coinciding with the Office?
I think that makes sense, we're talking about commercial only. I think, again, if we go...
It's seven fifty, I think is what you're talking about.
If we go to North Chrysler, that creates yet another boundary, so, I just like it being consistent, be consistent with the Office Professional.
So, the motion would be to alter the historic district attached to the resolution to coincide with the OP boundary on East Main Street.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. Item J, discussion and action on fifty-three hundred dollar and additional funding for the Southview Cemetery improvements.
I'd need to make a correction on that.
What's that?
I'd spoken, I need to make a correction. When I was listening to the minutes from la, I mean, to the meeting from last, on the seventh, I noticed I misspoke and said there were, I thought there might be four hundred unknown graves. There's a total of about seven hundred in Southview Cemetery, forty unknown. I don't know why I combined those two.
Forty, okay, okay.
I, I don't know how many might be in the Indigent Cemetery, I have no idea.
Okay. Motion to approve. Motion second, any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no? All members voting for the motion. City managers, no, item K, we have the item that was added on, which is regarding speeding on East Main Street. Mr. Grant?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank the, the police department, who's been added some extra enforcement to that. I think we received a report where they concurred that there, there's issues with speeding on East Main Street. And again, I've gotten a little, even additional feedback from constituents that are in approval of this. And again, due to several factors that, that the speed limit goes up and down, and up and down, I just think it makes sense to make it consistently twenty-five mile per hour for that period. Chief Mitchell, or was there any other reports or anything back from the police department on this?
I, I had emailed out, I think, to you, the information about the violations that they had, they had turned around during their extra enforcement period. They're still out on the speed study part, but Chief Mitchell and our, and our, our captain, assistant chief have gone out in that area, and, and part of the confusion on East Main Street depends on which direction you're going, because there's multiple signs and, and speed limits for one side of the street and on the other side of the street. Their recommendation is to come back and set the speed from Brown Industrial to Ship Street of thirty miles an hour, and then from Ship Street, the rest of the way of twenty-five miles an hour. From an enforcement standpoint, we cannot write, can't enforce unless somebody's going ten over that thirty, except in school zones where it's only one over. So, when the school zone is flashing, at, at, at twenty-six miles an hour, we could enforce it. And also, we can enforce it at one over in the historic district, which is currently set at Ship Street. So, from that point in, it's twenty-five.
I have a question. Who controls the flashing lights for the school? I mean, are we, did we put those li, the city put those lights in, or did the school?
We, we put those in.
We may need to look, since we're changing some things. Those lights are hard to see after you get, if you get right on them before you see them. They might need to flash a little sooner.
Well, and we, just in the last year, we've added an additional sign out, out that way, but in general, I've asked the police chief to look at all of our school zones. We have, we have an issue that I brought to his attention on Reservoir Drive, that the school zone sign is from eight AM to nine AM, but the school's actually in session before eight, eight AM. So, we need to adjust our times that are on our signs out there.
Mr. Rust?
Billy, when I came in to council tonight, I drove in that way. There are eight different speed limit signs from Five Seventy-Five to Darby's. There are three different speed limits posted on those eight different signs. And I think what you're suggesting is good, except for one thing. You're, you're taking that thirty speed limit out into a school zone, so, in the school zone, it's still gonna be twenty-five, so there'd be a posting for that twenty-five number. It's very, very confusing. I'm concerned that maybe keeping it up at thirty in the school zone and then dropping it down when the lights are flashing is just gonna add to the confusion, 'cause it really is another posted sign that says twenty-five when lights are flashing. So, there are eight, there are eight signs, and that's absolute confusion. We're trying to eliminate the confusion, I think this'll keep some of the confusion there. So, that, that would be my suggestion, is twenty-five straight across.
Part of the thinking was that the transition from forty-five down to twenty-five might be a little bit too fast of a transition. If we allow that thirty zone, because the, the other part about it is, at, at thirty miles an hour, that's still a long stretch to go twenty-five miles an hour. You know, we, we can look at it.
Yeah.
Mr. Grant?
I was just gonna concur with Mr. Rust, because I think a lot of the confusion is the school zone and where it starts and where it ends, which requires additional signage. And I think it currently is thirty miles per hour, beginning at that, at Shambly Street, I believe. And I just think that it's easier to understand, and it's safer, because we do have the, the big curve there at Janette Street. I would like to see it drop twenty-five, and, and if we need to get forty-five to, you know, thirty-five to twenty-five or something like that, I'd certainly in, in favor of that. But to me, once it starts at twenty-five, I think it should, should stay twenty-five. We're, we're only talking about, you know, a few blocks, really.
Part of, part of the issue with the school zone is that, you know, it, it, from, from the average user, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense, because the only people utilizing that section of the school zone on, on that section of the road are the buses. The actual drop-off of students is coming off of Brown Industrial, where the school zone is also in enforce on that road. And, and it'd be hard to go forty-five miles an hour through that stretch with the traffic that's through there. But, you know, if the wishes of council were to go to twenty-five, we can set that. That is a local decision, we could set that.
Mr. Goodwin?
I would agree with, with Mr. Peppers. There's, you know, you never see a child there, where the school zone is. They go down the drive and go to the school, be dropped off. And I also have had several people call me and, and send emails. They think twenty-five is, is too slow, but they think, you know, thirty, thirty-five, somewhere in that range is, is the correct speed. I think that's probably, the thirty, the whole way would make a lot more sense. It's hard to drive twenty-five miles an hour from, when people coming off the interstate, they've been running sixty-five, seventy miles an hour, and all of a sudden, they're down to twenty-five, and they're gonna drive that for a mile. It's, it's very, very hard for them to keep that speed. You know, you just, it just speed, you just hit that all of a sudden, and you really aren't moving that fast, but you're over that, that speed limit. Also, Joellen mentioned the sign there. It does need some, some work, 'cause I turn into my driveway and go that way every day, and, you know, I never paid much attention to it till I started getting some information, 'cause I always knew it was there. But people started sending me that, saying, it really needs to be plain on both sides, because you don't necessarily see it. It just kind of comes up on you.
Ms. McGree?
I'm not as concerned with the difficulty. I'm not as concerned with the difficulty that people are going to have transitioning the speeds. That's something you just have to deal with in life. I'm very concerned about the safety of people walking the sidewalks. Recently, well, in the past year, and Ms. Gold give me a no, or, or Mr. Kemp give me a no if I speak incorrectly, but there was a, a wreck, and the car ended up in the yard of Mr. Kemp. Had, and I'm gonna use people's names I know, had Candace Walker Bunda and Rob Walker Bunda been traveling with their two babies on that sidewalk, we'd be at their funerals. So, I am not especially concerned with the difficulty that people are going to have coming off of the interstate, transitioning down to twenty-five. I'm very concerned with the safety of our citizens.
Mr. Rust?
You know, we all got a nice email from Dan Owen, honestly admitting to how he drives on that street. Probably a very safe driver, but I think we would all be happy if the speed limit was twenty-five and nobody ever exceeded thirty, and the police department probably wouldn't be issuing a lot of tickets, but I'm not saying go out there and break the law. I'm just saying, twenty-five speed limit posted will drive everybody down under thirty, that would be wonderful. I don't think we would have a big problem with that, so that's my thought.
If we went with twenty-five, it'll be thirty-five. And that's, that's just the bottom line, you know, we won't be-
The crisis is what, from twenty-five to thirty-four?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Tickets at thirty-six.
So you're probably not going to get a ticket.
Didn't you just say that, that some, some areas, one mile an hour?
When it, when it is the school zone, regardless of what it is, I mean, it's twenty-five miles an hour. If it's speeding in the school zone, it's one over. Um, if it is in the historic district, it is one over. Pardon?
Half of that is historic district, isn't it?
No, the historic district that is in place, as it relates to the, to the, to the traffic stops at Ship Street.
It goes from-
Through downtown.
-school to Ship Street, right?
From the school to Ship Street would just be whatever speed limit you, you set out. It's not part of that historic district, as, as, as we have turned in on our, on our traffic enforcement, that we have to turn in for our, our violations with the state.
Now, let me, let me, uh, are, are we staying twenty-five miles per hour from the interstate?
No, we, we do have some overlap where we have to follow, you know, the state highway as it's coming into downtown.
So the speed limit now on that is, is, on the, at least the other side, is forty miles an hour?
Well, what the police department felt comfortable with was a break at Brown Industrial. That is traditionally where we break away from the state section.
So is on, on the east side of the interstate, is that forty-five?
Yes.
I know it's forty-five going east, but is it forty-five going west on the, the west side of the interstate?
I believe that it is.
So you would be going from forty-five to twenty-five, okay?
Now, now, having said that, the, the big difference is, as it relates to downtown, you're not supposed to have trucks on that road unless they're making deliveries. There's other enforcement, and, and in the email, I mean, there were, there were certain things that, that, you know, there were citations written for. Three of those citations were for, uh, commercial vehicles in the downtown that had no business in downtown. Um, you know, there, so there's other factors that we deal with in downtown that we don't deal with on other portions.
Well, I think, I think it's, uh, there's two positives here. It's going to be safer, it's going to generate a lot more revenue, I suspect.
Mr. Makinett? The trucks, then I mean, is again, another issue, um, in the whole area that's dangerous. And, and we have a lot of trucks turning into Brown Industrial Park, uh, and turning across the other side of Main Street, going into Brown Industrial. Again, I think lowering it to twenty-five consistently just calls more attention to it. We're talking five miles per hour. I'd rather have someone be inconvenienced five miles per hour for a few blocks than, than, and have risk of, of loss of life and, and risking public safety. And like you said, there is the ten mile per hour grace period, so, um, and if we're talking at thirty instead of twenty-five, then, then we're talking forty instead of thirty-five. So I, I would like to propose that we make it twenty-five miles per hour and be consistent with it, so.
Okay, is that, you have a, you make a motion?
I move.
Okay.
Twenty-five miles per hour for the-
Uniform from-
Uniformly from-
Second.
Brown Industrial.
Brown Industrial to-
Downtown.
Downtown, through downtown, where it's twenty-five miles per hour.
To where it's already twenty-five. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. City managers' report?
Yes, this, uh, this came up at our, I brought it to you at the last meeting. It is a change order for Atkins, and I would ask for council to consider approving it. This would allow us the opportunity to finish up the design of wooded mountain trail so that we can get that, that work out to bid. Um, they're currently out there doing the survey work so that we can keep the project moving forward. Um, and the, the change order is in the amount of-
It's about eighty-five, isn't it?
No, we, they, part of that's already been expended, forty-seven.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. Forty-eight, four eighty-one.
It's a total of about eighty-five, total design. Motion to approve. Have a motion, a second. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, Mr. Goodman?
Yes, so it's eighty-five thousand, is that what you're saying?
Total, yes, sir. We had already expended thirty-five thousand, which included a section of wooded mountain trail and one of the storm drains that's already existing out there. This additional forty-four includes the entire street for curving. It includes another storm section and dealing with the, dealing with the easements that we'll have to do with new aprons and the drives.
Well, I went up there recently, and I agree, it certainly needs to be done. But we have other streets, too, and that, that are right here that need to be done as well. And I would encourage council to look at some of the other ones. The Brown Street in particular is pretty bad.
We have, uh, Jack, one thing that we did, and I, I want to reemphasize this, because we really don't have, we have one or two, but I've suggested that, that we have each council member to pick out five of the worst streets that they would like to see, uh, immediately, uh, resurfaced in their particular wards.
Okay.
And, um, I mean, I realize we're probably going to have some duplication. I mean, two in the same ward may have the same ones, but still, I think we need to take those, put them together, and see how quickly we can get together a, a contract to, to get this started as soon as the weather is warm. Get it, hopefully, we'll get the list, uh, put together and get it bid out and have a proceed to work order as soon as it warms up to where we can do it.
Sounds great to me.
So if you would, please, please send a, uh, your suggested streets to them. We do know that some of the streets in some of the New York subdivisions, like down at River Green, some of those are going to have to be done anyway and are, are going to be a part of a, of a little different program there. Uh, so, you know, certainly, if, if you think they're bad, I would put them on there. But I think the, the gauge here should be those that look like they really need something. Potholes or, you know, alligator crack and whatever. Uh, Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I like, uh, I like seeing the emphasis on, on that. But I know wooded mountain trail, we've been talking about it forever, so I'd like to make a motion, we approve the Atkins change order.
Have a motion in a second.
We're into discussion, we've already done that, I think, didn't we? I thought we had a motion in a second already. Yeah, we did.
And we did have a motion.
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Well, we got another one.
It's okay, we got double, double your pleasure.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. All right. Under, under the mayor's report, we have the, uh, nominations for the various committees that we have, and there are several of them, and I would, um, call your attention to the, to the list there. Uh, some, some of the committees, of course, have no vacancies coming, coming to you through the thirty-first of December, and so we really don't need to do anything, uh, there. There are, uh, three members, uh, Canton Building Authority, whose term ended in December the thirty-first. Um, and that's Andy Bonner, Bob Riley, and Harold Swindell, and I'd recommend reappointment of those. The Canton Development Authority, there are, uh, none, none of them that, uh, some of them will come to you. Uh, terms will end at the end of sixteen, about three of those. So there's no appointment or, or reappointment to, uh, to make on those. Uh, Canton Housing Authority, uh, there's none there. None on the Canton Main Street Board. They are, uh, you'll see their terms, there's some that end in sixteen, but not fifteen. Canton Preservation, Inc., I would recommend in, in place of Jack Whitmire, who, who had resigned back in July, I guess, uh, Skip Spears. And, uh, recommend the reappointment of Neil McGruder and Stephanie Joyner on those. They, and these would be three-year terms, uh, according to city clerk, in lieu of one-year terms. Uh, Canton Tourism, I would recommend, uh, that, uh, all members be reappointed. That would include Pat Gold, Bill McGruder, Joyce Swindell, George Murphy, Francis Vaughn, Lane Wood. Um, Canton Tree Commission, we have, uh, two terms there. I'd recommend up for reappointment, that's Don Stafford and Ann Fincher. And Canton, Commission, Canton's future, there's none, none on that one. That, those are appointments that are made by the, uh, respective council members themselves. The Downtown Development Authority, there are none. There will be, there will be three, uh, slots come up for replacement or report, uh, reappointment in, at the end of June. Their terms go through June. Okay, let's see. Historic Preservation Commission, I would recommend, uh, uh, Mr. Grant, is that, Eddie Price? Had, uh, suggest, uh, Mr. Grant had suggested her and she, I understand, has accepted that. So we appreciate that very much, thank you. Um, also, uh, we have another slot that, uh, Mr. Glenn Bliss has pretty much told me he, he would like to be replaced back some time ago, and I've just hesitated doing it, hoping that he would be able to continue, but it appears not. So, uh, I have spoken, uh, to a gentleman on Jeanette Street, and, uh, we have a tentative replacement there, and hopefully, hopefully that will work. And if, if we get a positive feedback there, we will definitely, uh, make that nomination.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
I'm Joe Sellers, one, one, Jeanette Street, put me down for the historical preservation.
Okay, thank you. I, I'd spoken, I'd spoken to Joe this afternoon, but, uh, like all of us, he had to check with his wife, right? Before, before you, before you, absolutely, before you commit to anything. Uh, so I will recommend, uh, Joe, and he has served on the, uh, Kennesaw, I believe it was, Historic Preservation Commission. So he knows what it's all about. So we appreciate you doing that very much. So, uh, to replace, uh, Glenn Bliss, Mr. Joe Sellers, Jeanette Street, and to replace Sharon Hunt, who unfortunately had to step down, and hope she will be back at some point to serve in that capacity, because, uh, I think she would have done an excellent job, but health reasons, she needed to, to, to bow out for now. Uh, Eddie Price. Uh, all other members are, are within their current terms. Uh, Impact Fee Advisory Committee, these are annual appointees, so I would, uh, request reappointment of Dwight Pullen, Glenn Bliss, James Bagwell, and Doug Williams. On the International Property Maintenance, uh, Board of Appeals, there are, there are none that are up. Some come up in July, the end of July, uh, one does, I think. The rest are seventeen and eighteen, so there's no appointments to be made there. Library Board, Deborah Fincher is still within, uh, her three-year term. None on the Planning Commission, they're all in, in their terms. Uh, Stormwater Advisory Board, uh, uh, these are annual terms. I would recommend the reappointment of, of all the members, which include Jane Shellnut, Barbara Holloway, Steve Paget, James Spears, Ben Key, and Bill Kent. And I would recommend Jeff Adams, uh, to replace, uh, Jack Finchers and, uh, to fill his term. Okay? And on the Urban Redevelopment Agency, uh, I would recommend reappointment, uh, reappointment of all that board, which includes Tom Sanders, Karen Owen, Faris Yon, and Kathy Chapman. None on the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Various Board, all members are within their terms. And I believe that's the only ones I have. So I would recommend those committee appointments. We have a motion, we have a second. Have a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion, thank you. I would, I would like to announce, too, that I received a letter from the Georgia Municipal Association. Congratulations, the GMA Ethics Certification Committee has determined that the city of Canton meets the qualifications to be recertified as a Georgia Certified City of Ethics. So that is, uh, good news, we, we don't want to do that. Is there anything else here? I think that is, uh, is all. Uh, we will, we will now adjourn to, entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for discussion of real estate disposition and personnel.
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and we will not be coming back out to vote on anything, so thank y'all for coming tonight.